October 5th, 2023, Service Committee.
I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members present, Steve Young, Ciaran Sherrick, Brenton Pollard, and myself as chairman. We'd like to open up to the public, anybody have anything they want to talk about service? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the September 21st, 2023 Regular Service Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We got a motion by Aaron, second by Brenton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, first thing on the agenda, the FFAA report, the funding that Kevin Trey talked about on Tuesday. I think what we need to do with it is to approve it and let finance take over from that point. So it's pretty well set in stone what Kevin was talking about, that he needs to keep this airport up and going, so I need a motion to put that over into finance.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Brenton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Young, Steve, all those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, Stormwater Appeal Board.
The mayor's not here, but he had left me an email to read to all of you.
Okay.
It says, Miranda, I will be at the Crawford Foundation Annual Meeting tonight and will not able, and will not be able to attend the Service Committee meeting. Please make this announcement during the Service Committee meeting. I am reconstituting the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board and would like to nominate the following citizens to be members of the board. The terms will be in accordance with Section Number 927.09, or the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance. At the first meeting of the new board, the newly appointed members shall designate two members to serve two years and two members to serve one year. And those members will be Denny Tiner, Anthony Sheets, Craig Oerweiler, and Roger Brown.
Did you say those again? Denny?
Tiner, sorry. Anthony Sheets, Craig Oerweiler, and Roger Brown.
Can I come up and talk during the committee meeting before you?
Sure.
If you'll look at the codified ordinance 927.09, the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board.
Can you say that number again?
927.09.
Okay.
It states in there that it's the mayor, there'll be five voting members. The mayor appoints four. The fifth one is the Service Committee Chairperson, and that is voted on by council. It didn't even, it doesn't need to come to the Service Committee. He just goes to a council meeting and says, here are the four people I'm appointing, and council says yes or no. There has to be a two-thirds favorable vote, but it's never had to be here in service.
Right, but service does need to nominate one person.
Well, I mean, it's stated right there. The council's Service Committee Chairperson shall be the fifth voting person.
So it's not a nomination?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, no, we've never.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never had a meeting.
That sounds good. All approved.
Well, okay, we won't do nothing with it then. If he's gonna appoint those, you have to announce at the next meeting that he has to appoint them, and that's it.
Now, if I may ask, Miranda, what were the names again that you said the mayor's appointing?
Denny Tiner, Anthony Sheets, Craig Oerweiler, and Roger Brown.
Tony Sheets.
Okay.
So it doesn't require a resolution?
No, and if you also look at the appointments of subcommittees, it says no legislation needed.
Doesn't even need a.
Okay, that makes our job easier.
Two-thirds approval.
Okay, thanks, Vicki.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we don't do nothing with that, makes our job easier over here. Okay, next on the agenda is the changes to codified ordinance number 923.24, the lateral connections. You got anything on that you want to talk about, Brian, or is that gonna be Jeff Dunn's?
It's Jeff Dunn's project, but I did talk to him, and there are, we have installed 327, which would be roughly three-quarters of a million dollars, $750,000. He would like to not have any responsibility for anything up to the lateral, or from the lateral to the sewer, so that we can save those monies and use that in our stormwater, because people are gonna have rainwater and they're not gonna actually drain it into the stormwater sewers without.
They're storing the stormwater, not the.
Right, they're gonna dump it in the yard like we always do, but if we could have, if we could use some of those funds, that, you know, I mean, I think that was the intent we were going to.
But that's already been done. How are we gonna read?
He doesn't want to do more.
What's that?
He doesn't want to do any more at this point.
We do not want to do any more.
Okay.
We do not want to maintain them, and we never should have maintained them.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Yes, Ms. Sherrick?
What timeframe is that 327 done? Was that this year? Was that in the last two years? Was that in the last?
Since 2012.
Since 2012.
Since 2012.
Southern Avenue got done.
Every time we do a stormwater or we do a separation, we put in these cleanouts, and Jeff Dunn says we need to stop putting in these cleanouts, because we don't use them, the city doesn't use them, and so we're doing, we're wasting city funds for personal projects, and we could spend that money better getting storm, or, yeah, stormwater into our storm sewers.
Well.
So are you gonna vote on the numbers?
No, we're not. Do we get more in convention?
And you know, when I came up before, I forgot to say Vicki DeShawn on 1108 Hillcrest Drive.
Hillcrest, yeah.
What'd you say?
Hill Street, Hillcrest.
Hillcrest, yes.
Two different streets.
Pretty much the same.
Yeah, that's all.
Completely different end of town.
So back when this was done in 2012, and I was working here at that time as the law clerk, and, you know, they questioned if, you know, you knew any history of what all transpired when we did ordinance 17-2012. I had a file on this very matter, because it affected me personally, and then also professionally, you know, working on the legislation, what have you. Right now, that ordinance says, and I just wanna make sure I understand, that our cleanout that we have, when our house was built, we were told by the city administration where our cleanout was to be. I came up and got from John, got my receipt and everything back on June 5th, the 12th, or June 5th, 2012, copy showing that the placement of our, what do you wanna call it, cleanout, was approved. Is Jeff, I'd like to say right now, the way it stands is, if there's any issue with our, we as a homeowner are responsible right now for, from our house to our cleanout, then from the cleanout to the main is the city's responsibility.
No.
Is that what he's, what, you're saying, no, that's not the way it is?
No, if you read the ordinance, you're responsible for your own cleanout.
You're responsible to the lateral.
No, so you're responsible from your house.
You're responsible from your house.
To the cleanout and the cleanout.
Right.
Correct.
From the cleanout to the main.
From the cleanout to the main is us.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say.
Oh, yeah, no, yes, then you're right. You're responsible up to and through the cleanout.
Right.
Yes.
So is that what he, or is that what Mr. Dunn is proposing, that council consider changing that?
Yes, well, so it's my understanding, and Mr. Dunn's not here, so we can table this and bring him in, but Mr. Dunn tells me that the city has been maintaining these cleanouts, and there's been caps that have popped off, freezing, thawing, whatever, so these cleanouts have been an issue, but they don't benefit the city. So what he's saying is, if you wanna clean out, great, get a cleanout, but you're still responsible from the edge of your house to our sewer. And that's what the law right now says, you're responsible from the edge of your house to the end of the cleanout.
Right.
The other end, you clean out your own cleanout.
Yeah.
And he's just saying, and realistically, what they were.
So he does want to change it.
Yeah.
He wants to take the entire lateral, not just from the cleanout to the sewer.
Yeah.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Say that again.
From what he's saying, he wants to change it so that it's not just from the cleanout, the edge of the cleanout to the line, that the entire lateral goes to the home.
Which is what everybody else.
But clarify that. Who are you talking to?
Which is what.
But please clarify, are you saying the city or the homeowner?
The homeowner.
Mr. Dunn wants the change from what it is now.
Yes.
To instead of, just to the cleanout for the homeowner, to the entire lateral.
But not for the city?
Right.
The homeowner, yeah.
That's a given.
We knew that.
Wait, wait, let me, let me talk.
Yes, it's $2,000.
Anybody, it is $2,000, and we've spent $750,000 on these cleanouts, but if you don't have a cleanout, you're already responsible.
Right.
From your property to our sewer.
Correct.
That lateral is yours. So all we're saying is, if you wanna clean out, great, that will help you as a homeowner, but we're not going to pay, and we're not gonna clean it, and we're not gonna maintain it for you.
Yeah.
That's what Mr. Dunn's point is. And when we did this, these cleanouts were supposed to be in the tree lawn, right up next there, but based upon engineering, I don't know, I'm not a sewer guy, but based upon whatever the reason is, they're way back towards the house, so we're maintaining a longer lateral than we ever anticipated. That's the problem.
Okay. Before ordinance 17-2012 was passed.
Yes.
The homeowners had to come up, or our developer, builder, had to come up and get an approval for this cleanout. We, and I mean, I have the drawings and everything, we were told where the cleanout was to go. And in the history that I've gone through on this, it started out with our former engineering tech, Mr. Casero, was the one that initiated, he wanted it to be that the homeowner was responsible from the house all the way.
Right.
Right.
To the city sewer.
Correct.
Which should have been.
The Service Committee met, I mean, multiple emails, meetings, what have you, and it ended up with that statements were made, if I may read these.
Not to cut you off, but I think you're going to table it.
Yeah, we're on table until Jeff.
Because Jeff Dunn needs to be here to talk about this.
I don't, I don't, I don't know the engineering, I don't know the, I don't know anything about
that.
I know the legal. Somebody here knows what to say.
Ramifications, we can switch it, but I don't know, I don't know, I know why they told me they want to do it, but I don't know the legal history, I don't know.
A little more information this week, we'll do it at our next committee meeting.
Okay, at the next committee meeting, and we'll make sure that we've got that posted so that.
Yep.
The public knows that this is on the agenda and.
And we're requesting that Mr. Dunn be here?
Yes. Oh, you know, Jeff would have been here, he had some prior obligations.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb Huber, 1302 Southland Drive, Bucyrus. I just need a point of clarification. I didn't bring a water bill with me, but on my water bill, there's something about insurance. What does that insurance cover? I mean, I'm paying for it.
That, that covers if your sewer breaks, has something happened to your sewer?
Nothing, why?
No, so like.
It can be both, it can be water or sewer.
Yeah, right, if you get a $7,000 water bill because something in your house is leaking and you had no idea, the insurance company will come in and make sure that you fix whatever the leak is, and then they will pay or negotiate with the city and fix it. So at my office, we had like a $5,000 water bill because one of the toilets downstairs was leaking, we don't use those offices, it's the voice of hope. The city called, said, hey, you've got a $5,000 water bill. And we talked to the insurance company, they said, oh, yeah, you're covered, fix it, and so we called a plumber, got it fixed. So that's, that's what that is.
Nothing with sewer, then?
I think it does the sewer also, you can put it in there.
It might, I don't know, I just know.
You have both of them if you want it.
I just know.
That's a question that Barb would have had you have signed up for or opted out of?
Oh, she did.
Opted out.
She did sign up for it, when she signed up for utilities, you could opt out of it, but that would be a bad idea.
Right, no, no.
Don't do that, Barb.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm not going to, thank you.
Okay, we'll table that till our next committee meeting, make sure Jeff Dunn's here for that one. Moving on to open projects, thank you, Miranda, for getting an update list of this. The one thing that I see on ours to take off is the bar screen at the wastewater plant, that has been done, and you can take that off. The rest of the stuff, you can leave on, okay? Anybody else have any questions on what's on there?
Yep.
Okay, any more public participation from anybody? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:18.
Health and Safety Committee, October 5th, 2023.
All right, this is the October 5th, 2023 Health and Safety Committee meeting. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:18 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself as chairs. Are there any public participation for health and safety? Seeing none, you have in front of you the minutes from the September 21st, 2023 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carries. Next up is purchasing of a vehicle for the police department, Chief Ostenheimer.
So I've been working with the auditor to try to figure out a way to get a couple cars. Like I said, we've had, I think I've brought up numerous times that they're getting high miles and nickel and diming us to death here. I don't know if she can explain kind of, or was that a finance thing or what, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into the money side of it with finance. I think for, for the Health and Safety Committee meeting, we just really need to say that we're in favor of moving forward this and send it on to finance, kinda like service just did with their.
Okay. Yep, this would be for, what we're looking at is a Dodge Durango, that's, at least as of a couple weeks ago, they still had them available that we could order through Par. I believe you guys have a quote probably from Par for two. Like I said, I guess more or less divide that by two, and we can get the price for one, and that's kind of what we're wanting to do, that's like, that's what's available right now. The Fords are not as available, as I understand from talking to the people down at Par.
Okay, so I think what we need to do at this juncture is just move this on to finance, if you guys are favorable, so I'd entertain a motion to send this to finance.
Absolute.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, and a second by Mr. Young to send this with our approval to finance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. We'll talk about it here in about three more meetings.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Young, anything on the open projects list you wish to discuss?
Just a couple.
Mr. McKeever?
No, sir.
Mr. Wireball?
I don't think so, no.
All right, any public participation? The lady from Hill Street.
Hillcrest Drive.
I can't get that out of my mind now that he said it.
Don't blame me.
Feral cats and fireworks.
Yeah.
You had indicated that you needed to speak with the chief about those. Have you had an opportunity?
I have not yet. On the feral cats, that was, we decided that the administration really needs to look at that as much as time to see if there's any money, which we know there's not going to be. So there's not much we're gonna do with that. As far as the fireworks, we just need to do some more research, and everybody needs to read through the information that was presented, and I have not yet had a chance to discuss it with the chief, so.
Okay.
I asked Miranda to leave it on the open projects list, but since we haven't had those conversations, I didn't have it on the agenda tonight.
I did talk, I don't remember if it was with mayor or the service director, it was with someone upstairs, that initially we had a, or when I started, we had an animal warden here that worked for the city, and he doubled as a utility officer, and he came around and did like dog work and stuff in the city, and also I think he set fire traps for nuisance animals and whatnot. I guess that we have to finance if you was willing to refund that position again, but I said you'd be looking at another full-time civilian employee to take care of all that.
Well, and I think.
But at the same time, I have spoken to the Humane Society, and they can take cats, but they're not going to take a bunch of cats, like.
What does that necessarily mean?
That necessarily means that.
I mean, are they gonna sign up, says we're not taking cats today, or when they reach the limit, I don't, you know, what's, what do you mean that they'll be sold?
Absolute cat limit.
They've got their outdoor boxes, I mean, you could go.
You can drop them in there, and then they will be humanely euthanized.
Those are no longer available.
Oh, they're not?
No, they're locked.
Okay.
Right, so you could, you, you, right, you could, you could do what you want, but they don't have the capacity or the funding to.
Right.
Handle 10 cats a day.
Yeah, as we previously discussed, you know, the city doesn't have the finances right now to afford to pay for, you know, the spaying and neutering, let alone somebody to collect them, so that's why I know.
It's a Bob Barker thing.
Well, and on the fireworks, just so you know, chief, I mean, it was stated that the committee wanted to talk with you, or Kevin wanted to talk with you, about the police department's ability to enforce, because, you know, there was a new law, House Bill back in 2022, that now allows, there's a set number of, like, I think it's 20 days that people can do fireworks. We've had a citizen that's come up and expressed her concerns, not only her concerns, but concerns of other people, she's been their, what you would call, spokesperson, and I guess I just wanna.
Well.
You know, follow up and.
Right, and yes, she came and she expressed her concerns, but we don't, we're not getting calls to the police department, we're not getting a lot of traffic on this issue, so, you know, we have to allocate resources, because we only have so many people in the police department, and shooting off fireworks, or shooting at some traffic guy driving down the street, or dealing dope, like, it's a resource allocation.
I think one of her concerns that she mentioned with the fact that fireworks were being allowed to be shot off for like, you know, 20 different days, service people that had served in the service that have the, never say that right.
PTSD.
PTSD, we absolutely support those, and we absolutely understand that, but it's a resource allocation.
And her concern was, she's not opposed to the fireworks, it's just 20 days of fireworks.
Right, it's definitely still a resource allocation.
So if I can.
Sure.
Since you're here, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you, let me talk to you real quick. Do you believe that if we made any type of a change to the ordinance to lessen that number of 20 days down, would your office utilize that law being changed, and would that be of any benefit to you in the enforcement and to, you know, the people who call with those complaints? Would that, would it do any good for us to look at this, is what I'm asking?
I mean, you know, we've had fireworks calls for years, I mean, if you can find out where they're coming from, and then it's like, what do you do with them, cite them? I don't know. I personally would rather, I would rather see you guys not do that. You know, we got so many fireworks calls, just as it is, and there's often times nothing you can do with them.
But I thought you just said, you don't get, the police department doesn't get calls, so now we have a police.
If you read the police reports, they're in there all summer long, yeah.
I know, they're, they're, and I did not check out what she said.
They're in there a lot. But I think what the chief's saying, and I think what Mr. Gurness alluding to, you know, if, if you hear them and you call, they're not gonna know who in the world did that.
Right.
You know, unless they're, they have one heck of a party that's still going on seven minutes later when they show up and see it going on, which is rarely the case.
It's a resource allocation. Would you prefer, when you call the cops, because your business, your home is getting broken into, they respond to that, or they chase some kid shooting off fireworks in the alley for the Fourth of July? It's a resource allocation. If we had a ton of money, and we could pay everybody double time, overtime, bring in another 18 officers, yeah, we'll chase everybody down, but we can't do it.
Well, I'm interested in your comment, resource allocation, when I'm thinking of, and I have nothing against the Broadwurst Festival, but the fact that the city is not charging the Broadwurst Festival for police or fire, and you wanna talk about resource allocation, would I prefer that the police come to my house when I call, if I'm having someone break in? Or prefer that they be downtown during the Broadwurst Festival?
Very valid point. That's a discussion and a negotiation and an argument we have to have when you come up here. I don't know, all I know is, we do not have a lot of people shooting off fireworks, robbing houses, like, it's a different crowd, so are we going to evaluate and work on our criminal side, the burglaries, the drug traffickers, that stuff, or are we gonna go out and nail people for shooting off fireworks? How many, chief, how many people we have on duty overnight? Two?
Usually sometimes three.
Two or three.
Usually two.
All right, so we have six firefighters, and we have two or three police department officers, so we're trying as best as we can, and I think fireworks are low man on the totem pole. I would prefer that they would show up if my neighbor was robbing me, shooting me, sex crimes, all those things, as opposed to shooting off fireworks. I know, it makes my, I have three dogs, and they're complete menaces to society, and I will admit that, but I would prefer that the police department shows up and protects my house from vandalism, criminalism, burglary, as opposed to my neighbor having a little bit too much fun shooting off fireworks. It is a resource allocation, that's what I mean by that.
Well, and my main reason of bringing it up is, as a future council at large representative for 24, 2024, 2025, I want to bring, you know, the constituents' concerns to council. I realize it's gonna be different, I'm gonna be sitting on that side, and I expressed that when I was on the ad hoc committee, it is a different feeling.
Overwhelming.
Sitting there than, you know, standing up here.
Right, and that's my point, we have to look at money, we have to look at allocation, you know, we've, every morning I come into the office, and I've got domestic violence, I've got assault, I've got thief, theft, you know, okay, so I would prefer my police officers go and make sure that the woman or man that's getting beaten by their domestic partner is protected, as opposed to Bob that's shooting off a couple fireworks in his backyard to celebrate the Fourth of July.
Well, again.
God bless America.
I just wanna bring it to council's attention, so then the constituents can hear, you know, how you react and your comments to, you know, their concerns, so, thank you.
Absolutely, God bless America.
Thanks, Vicki. Anything else, public participation? All right, we're gonna adjourn Health and Safety at 6:31 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, October
Public lands and buildings committee, October 5th, 2023.
Calling public lands and buildings to order at 6:32 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and myself, here as the chair. Do we have any public participation? Okay, seeing none, I would accept somebody making a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 21st, 2023, the regular public lands and buildings committee meeting.
Second, Mr. Wireball's motion.
Okay, we have a pro's from Mr. Wireball, a second from Mr. Myers, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anything on the open projects list to talk about this evening?
No, ma'am.
Do we have any other public participation? Okay, I'm going to adjourn this at 6:33 PM.
Planning committee, October 5th, 2023.
We'll call planning to order at 6:34 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, I'm sorry, looking at the, looking at the wrong one. Kevin Meyer, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself, chair. Okay, are there any public participation? None being? You have before you the minutes for September 21st. Do I, can I entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Terry beat you. You're slow, what's happened, Dan? Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, unanimous. You have before you the open project list, and thank you very much for condensing that down considerably. If you see anything you wanted to discuss, we can, otherwise, are there any public participation? Okay, no one? I'll adjourn at 6:35 PM.
Development committee, October 5th, 2023.
All right, I'll call economic development to order at 6:36 PM with members present, see Aaron Sherrick, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, chair. First, open it up for public participation for economic development. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes from September 21st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 21st, 2023, from the regular economic development committee meeting.
Second.
All right, I've got a first from Ms. Sherrick and a second from Mr. Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. Next, Brian, do we need to do anything with this FAA report since we sent it to finance and service? Do we need to?
Just, yeah, approve it.
Okay.
You guys are in favor of moving forward with the FAA, both the runway project and the terminal.
Okay, I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for us to approve sending it on to finance.
Steve seconds that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It was in here because it's a community enrichment program that we can do.
Cool, cool, cool. All right, our open projects list is pretty slim, minus the annexation.
What are you going to announce today?
Everybody?
I did talk to the water department about people that are accepting our services and not in our city, and Shay Schnabel and I will start working on new people signing up, having to actually sign a contract. So we might not be able to.
Can we do that, though? Like, if it's not contiguous?
It's, it's in, it's in the law, and if it's not contiguous, they sign that contract.
Well, if it's not contiguous, it's fine.
Well, if they sign that contract, then when the contiguous place in between, it adds in.
Correct, so, yeah, yeah. But I'm here, might not be ready, but once we get these people, it's a.
It's a long process. Sure, sure, okay, cool.
If Dan would've got it done 20 years ago, we would've been good.
Yeah. It's a starting point.
No, but Shay and I have talked about that and, and new, new signups, because we are bringing a bunch of people in, and we're not gonna get, we're bringing in people from Nevada and Sulfur Springs, we're not gonna get those. But the people.
Contiguous.
Sure.
Close to Timken, close to my house out the west side, those people that are signing up for new services, sign a contract, and if ever they, if ever we are in a position to annex them, they will have to agree.
Okay.
Or we don't give them water and they can, I don't know about their sort.
It's a start, I was just giving you a hard time. Anything else anybody else wants to talk about?
No.
All right, last but not least, any, any more public participation? If not, we'll adjourn at 6:40 PM.
Finance committee, October 5th, 2023.
Yeah, let's call finance committee to order at 6:42. Any public participation for finance committee? Not seeing any, we'll, I'll ask for approval, oop, I'm on the wrong one too, Mark. Oh, members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, chair. Any public participation? Still none, and approval of minutes from September 21st, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve September 21 regular finance committee meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second from Mark, and then we're gonna talk about the FAA report.
We have to vote?
Oh, yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. FFA report, funding of 5%. So I just wanted to say about this, you know, here, and I know we have a couple council members that will be coming aboard, and the public out there, in my years on council, and, and they probably already know it, but, but my years on council, anytime there's an FFA grant, I think we need to jump on it, because anytime you can get something for 5%, yeah, do it, spend the money, you know. So just, future council and everyone, when it says FFA grant, and we're only paying 5%, jump on that, okay. So now, we'll go to that. Do we want to move forward with this FFA?
Yeah, what are we looking for here? Are we looking for?
Yeah, I don't know.
We have to.
Two pieces of legislation, approve on the terminal, the second on the runway lights, so asking CMT to proceed with the planning phase of.
Will it be a resolution for both?
Yeah.
And do they need to be emergencies either?
Uh, yeah, I would do both, just because.
Timing.
As you heard from Mr.
Detray.
Detray. FAA and all those funds are highly competitive, but.
So, so on the terminal, we're ask, we're asking for a resolution authorizing CMT to do what? To submit the report to the FFA? Or FAA?
Yeah. To prepare justification.
Okay, so I'll make a request for legislation authorizing CMT to complete the terminal justification report at a proposed cost of $10,000 with our 5% equalling $500 as an emergency.
Right. Do you have a second? A second from Terry? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, in the same light, I'll request emergency legislation that authorizes CMT to do the design for rehabilitating the runway lighting at a proposed cost of $55,000 with our 5% equalling $2,750.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this, these funds were already in the, in the budget also, right?
This $3,000 was not in the budget, so we need to appropriate, yeah, $3,000.
Okay, we're gonna get to that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appropriate the 5% cost of those two grants for, from the general fund 101 of $3,000 to line item contractual services under the airport as an emergency.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? All right. So that we're transfer of funds from Waterworks Fund to, oh, here it is. Transfer funds from Waterworks to local fiscal recovery special revenue fund. This is for, oh, this, is this the Nevada or?
This was the county money that was their ARPA money.
Oh, okay.
We, we just have to show it differently for how we're expending it.
Sorry, a little bit of background, what's going on? This money for the project that's currently underway is actually on a purchase order in the Waterworks Fund. So before I transfer the money, I can do this without anything, but I'm gonna decrease that purchase order line to $300,000, should put it back into that line, and then I'm gonna switch it. So we don't have to appropriate any money, just take it off the purchase order it's currently on, and then we can transfer that to that new fund. If that explains it better.
So you still need legislation transferring it from Fund 701 to Fund 270?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to transfer $300,000 from Fund 701 Waterworks into Fund 270 Local Fiscal Recovery Special Revenue Fund as an emergency.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Oh, chief, purchasing of a vehicle for a police department. Tell me how, what you guys have been doing to achieve this? That's what I'm, you told me, but I'm sure everybody else.
Sure. Over the course of the year, you know, we've, we've had our manpower reduced to just two guys on the road at any given time for, since last year, when we started having guys leaving for other departments, we never raised that back up. Oh, we've had one detective running for the last, I don't know, 18 months, and he's getting, getting buried and his job isn't getting any easier. We've had captains working patrol slots during day, day shift to keep overtime down. Oh, gosh, I should've grabbed that list, it was right on my desk, but I had about five different things. The big thing is that we have, we've adjusted the comp time through the contract so that if anybody is off on a comp day and then someone puts in a personal day or calls in sick, the comp time gets rescinded and they have to come to work. I mean, all this is stuff that we have done to save, save the city some money. Like I said, the, you know, the captains there that have their administrative duties, I mean, they do those, and in addition to that, they're out on the road taking calls. I go out and take calls at times if I'm needed. The big thing is the minimum, two officers on the road plus the one desk unit, and if the dispatcher calls in sick and there's three officers working, then one officer is sitting desk. So we don't have overtime coming in for that either. And like I said, it gets pretty short sometimes, you know, and you get only two guys out there. And I think afternoon shift had, I think, 10 calls in like three hours or something yesterday, and then that 20 calls between two officers, just, just for that eight-hour shift, I think is what Jenny told me they had. I know day shift had probably at least 10 or 15 calls yesterday as well. I didn't bring the, the log up, but we're busy every day for the most part.
So, yeah, so, yeah, I just wanted to give us, give everybody a little bit of what, what was going on down there. And so you guys are asking for one, just one cruiser right now?
Yes.
And that's what the budget can allow?
Correct.
And it's, the money's there, the, we're expecting the prices to go up like everything else, and so we want to get moving on this, so I guess.
Why, why is the money there?
Why is the money there? You're talking about in the safety forces fund or because of the ARPA grant we got that we're paying for, probably paying two officers off of a ARPA grant for this year and probably part of next. So I mean, that's another thing that saved us a, a lot of money is that we was able to apply for and get that grant.
But you've cut within your budget to make this happen.
Yeah, there's a lot of the positions I told you about there. Once we get them, once we get them back, I mean, once we get these two guys cut loose, we're gonna go back up to two detectives again. That'll probably be the end of November by the time that happens. And like I said, we've, we've worked pretty hard to try to stay within the, in the budget that we've been given here.
Thank you. I was just prosecuting for you guys on a daily basis. I know that the work you guys do is great, and it, it, I know that it's a struggle with the finances that we give you, and, and we're, we're trying to get a detective here, we're trying to get a police officer there, you know, I mean, it's a struggle.
Right, I know, it's like I hear the dispatcher all the time telling them, it's like, you're gonna have to wait a minute, it's gonna be a minute. It's just, that's just the way that it is, I mean, we don't.
We had that behind Kroger today, like, eh, or maybe it was yesterday, but eh, we'll get there when we can get there, because there's 15 homeless people living behind Kroger down in the.
I guess in the woods or in the buildings.
In the wood, yeah. And, and yeah, everybody knows it's a problem, but as opposed to getting your house broken into, we have to allocate resources. It's my favorite word of the night, allocate resources.
Right, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of prioritizing of calls, like I said, a private property crash or car lockout or something like that, a lot of that stuff has to wait.
Two words, right? My science teacher from seventh grade said that's two words.
Yeah.
Allocate resources.
Right.
Chief, can you, so the public hears this also, how many vehicles are over 70,000 miles?
All right, I'm gonna start counting them by my head here, so, yeah.
So we're, we're gonna need one to be ready, so we have an able, available vehicle for the police to use?
Correct, I think all the six that I mentioned are all, I think one of them is 2017, the other ones are all 2014s or 2015s that we've had since.
So we, we need more than one, we can afford one.
Correct.
And so that was the point I wanted to make was, I'm absolutely in favor, I'm more than bored with this, but I've also asked, and the auditor's gonna continue to look at, the fact that we're anticipating the cost to go up and the availability to not be there, can we look at financing a second one?
Right, but the re, the reason we can afford one is because the chief of the police department has cut and has been fiscally responsible. I, I mean, I, I understand I'm the jerk in the room, but we're paying 400, 500, 600,000 dollars in overtime to the fire department, because they will refuse to come to the table and talk to us about how we can fix that. But the chief of fire, the chief of the police department has actually taken it on his shoulders and made it so that we can actually afford that without having to come out of our budget, out of our pocket, and I would, I mean.
And I appreciate that from this chief, and I really don't, I don't want to get in that discussion there.
Oh, I don't, I don't.
I know.
So, if I, if I could, yeah, I would like to move forward with this, but I would also like to leave it open to see if there's other options where we can at least get one more as a financing option, to where you make that initial down payment and then you look into next year's budget. Because if you do the opposite and you just wait and then make a decision to buy another one next year, well, the prices might be up, the availability may be down, things like that. So we've historically done that, you know, years ago in the past with, with all of our vehicles, where we kind of kicked the can down the road and we wait and wait and wait, and now crap, now we've got cars like you remember, what, you know what we went through with police cruisers that you could see through the, the floor.
Right, yeah, they weren't very good there for a while.
Yeah, so I don't want to get into that situation again, so I want to be proactive and, and do the best we can, so I appreciate talking to the auditor about that. She's gonna look into what are, and the chief together, they're gonna look at what other options we have to get additional one or, one or more.
Dan?
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
So the, I know you said the Fords are available, are the Fords the same price as the Doryne's or are they more expensive?
I would have to ask the guy from Par, but the way it was put to me was the Ford, and you have to forgive me, I don't know 100% the model years, but for example, if you ordered a car in '22, they canceled the orders, moved them to '23, raised the price $9,000.
Without changing a darn thing about the car?
Yeah, I think it's the same body style and everything. Yeah, I think it's the same body style and everything that I'm aware of, but it's, they're just not, they're, the way they, when they told me that they're not building new Fords until October of next year, and then the, correct, for, it's a new body style, of course, and nothing will fit that we have now. And he said that their dealerships are not gonna be able to mass order the police interceptors like they have in the past, that you have like, they're gonna open the window for like a week, so if you know you're gonna need a car and you wanna order from Ford, you have like a week to get your order in.
So they have a list of vehicles that are, like, a third list of vehicles that basically Durango's one that's available?
Correct. And I think the Charger, I think Dodge Charger, I think the Charger might be available as well, but, I mean, I think the Durango would suit our purpose much better, and I, I think they're about the, I don't, I can't tell you that they're the same price, but this is gonna suit us better than a Charger.
And the Charger, I think it's, do you?
And I think, and I do think they're gonna, I think they're available now, but they may not be available later.
Well, and I don't know if the public cares about this part or not, but, you know, when, when we look at making a switch from, we've historically had Fords back, I think we had the Plymouths when I was a little kid, and then we switched over to Ford, you know, when I was in, in middle of grade school or middle school, and we've had Fords ever since. When you look at making a change like that, um, the State Patrol just made a switch that they're going all to the Dodge Durango as well, so you know that's a very capable vehicle. They're made that change.
Yeah, Licking County just apparently bought 22 of them that they're gonna be, so, I mean, there, everybody's getting them because that's what's there.
Yeah.
And I don't know that you can go anywhere and buy a, a new Ford police interceptor. I don't know, I can ask them, but-
I saw one on Facebook Marketplace this morning, $17,000.
All right, well, give me, get their number for me.
220,000 miles on it.
Well, we talked about that, too, was trying to get rid of that, that one Hummer, but, yeah, we need to get it running first.
Okay, so, uh, moving forward with this, any other, did you get your question answered? Okay. Anything else? I guess we need to, uh, we need to move money first, or second, or after, or approve it, and then move the money, or looking here?
Uh, we need, I, I know we need to move the monies from the Safety Forces levy to, uh, the General Fund Police Department Capital Outlay Line. I guess I can read through it. We need to transfer money, $60,000 from the Safety Forces Levy Police Department Personal Services to, um, transfer that $60,000 to General Fund Police Department Capital Outlay Line for the purchase of a new vehicle.
So I guess first we ought to decide if we're gonna get a new vehicle, or at least this committee decide.
I'll make, I'll make that motion to, uh, move $60,000 from the Safety Forces Levy Fund 202 from, uh, Personal Services Line, transferring it into the General Fund in the Capital Outlay Line in the amount of $60,000 as an emergency.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then do we need, do we need, well, you have that, do we need legislation to actually purchase this, or?
I believe once the-
You need to go out to bid.
Oh, we have to go out to bid?
Well, or do you have to go to bid, or using state purchase?
I believe it's probably-
So state purchase, we don't need a bid.
So we can just get a requisition from PAR and then get it through them.
So we're good? We got everything we need?
Yeah.
Say, Dan, go Buckeyes.
Never gonna happen.
All right, so we've got that. And let's move on. I guess we, I guess you're gonna get your new-
Yeah.
Go down there, yeah, guys, you'll have to get the guys donuts tomorrow, so. But we can't requisition that right now. So, uh, now we need approval of the 2024 tax budget. That's the one from the county? I looked at that, and then I was like really confused, and then. So basically, it's our share of what we're getting from the county, is that what we're saying?
Yes, and we just have to agree to that, and we accept their amounts and rates. We have to get it signed and turned back into them by October 27th. That's why it needs to be an emergency. But I just got the 26th, so it's totally not my fault.
It's that way every year.
Mm-hmm.
Every year, yeah. I'll make a motion, go ahead, put this 2024 tax budget forward to council.
As a-
As an emergency.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so, all right, uh, I don't know, employee wages. Does anybody know anything about that?
Just this transfer.
Oh, is that this other transfer?
So that would be the transfer of, oh, gosh, uh, $424,898, sorry, $424,898.25 split into, uh, $132,411.97 from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund General Government Contractual Services Line, and $292,486.28 from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund General Government Other Uses Line, and we're gonna be transferring that to Program 101 General Fund Security of Persons and Property Fire Department to 21 Personal Services, and that's so we can pay them for the end of the, well, we'll still have to appropriate funds after this, but, so we can pay them for the time being.
Okay, so we're transferring funds?
No, we're still gonna have to appropriate about $121,000.
Is this needed to be an emergency?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for this transfer out of Fund 271 into Fund 101 of the amount of $424,898.25 into Personal Services.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we've got that taken care of. Uh, now we'll move into open projects, but I guess at the be, at the top of my open projects is, this is, this is kinda fell into place pretty good here. So, we just transferred, uh, from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which we will not get next year, that money won't be there, we've just transferred $424,000, half a million dollars, give or take, to pay, uh, employees of the city. So, I guess the last meeting, or a couple meetings ago, I, I moved that we talk about the tax credit, taking the tax credit back. So, I'll open that up if anybody has anything to say about it, so.
Well-
Where are we going, where, where are they gonna get the money next year? That is, that is my only concern.
I think it's something we need to look at very seriously, because she says, yes, appropriate another hundred and some thousand just to make payroll by the end of the year. That's a half a million dollar right there. That takes care of that levy that we, that we pass, so you don't particularly wanna tax anybody else, but we have to do something, so.
Yeah. So-
Unfortunately.
He's not wrong, but I'll just differ with you slightly in the fact that, number one, we haven't yet seen the true effects of what the levy's gonna bring in.
Yeah, that's true.
And second of all, in pushing for the passage of said levy, we sat here and made a commitment to our, our constituents that we weren't gonna take that away, at least immediately.
We also said we didn't think we was gonna take that ARPA money to pay salaries.
So I haven't, we have, we, we haven't seen next year's budget yet to see exactly what the need is, and we'll be seeing that soon.
Okay.
I'd like to learn a little more from that side of things and to see what the levy's gonna bring in, because I don't, just because it's the easiest way to fix it doesn't make it the only way, and it doesn't make it the right way, and the fact that we sat here and, and made that promise to those people that if they voted for this levy, we wouldn't do this. That's 1,700 of our, however many taxpaying citizens we, we said that we had. We owe it to them to just be diligent and look at all things. And if in the end we come up to that's the only option, great, let's just do it in the, in the right order is all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll be the jerk in the room again, but we are paying over $500,000, $600,000 in overtime to the fire department. Why cannot we get somebody here to tell me why this is necessary, what we can do to fix it? Every time I discuss, well, why don't we hire EMTs? Why don't we bring in, um, paid-on call from out of county so that we are not paying PERS overtime, all of those things? Why can't we do, um, four people overtime, four people overnight? Like, tho, those issues were supposed to be, when I sat here and the mediator told us, these are things that you guys need to work on, I, I, I took it to heart. And so we sat here, and nobody from the Fire Department Union gave a crap. It didn't matter, they got their raise, and they laughed at us when we tried to fix the overtime. So, y'all, you can stack the, stack the room, you can hate on me, I don't care, but $600,000 in overtime for the fire department is ridiculous. And you can raise taxes, you can cut people's credits, you can do whatever you want, but we're spending way too much on a ridiculous feat, like, we need to fix that. If I've got-
You're gonna eliminate that overtime by hiring more firefighters.
Yes, we could. I, I absolutely agree. We could eliminate $600,000 in overtime by hiring six new firefighters and paying them $600,000, Kevin.
I get, you used the word overtime.
No, no, that's ridiculous, but- Chief Ostenheimer, how many people do you have overnight?
You, you're comparing apples to oranges, Mr. Garner.
Yes, I am.
They're two different animals.
I'm comparing my house, I'm getting, I'm comparing-
Require two different sets of equipment, two different sets of training, two different sets of skill functions. You are comparing two things that should never be compared.
Right, because-
Please stop comparing the-
Overnight, we get 6.1 calls per night. Firefighters, 6.1.
And it can't be, you cannot take care of a call overnight with one person the way that a police officer could take care of it with one. You're comparing two things that have no justification to compare.
I don't, I don't, no, I don't wanna take care of it. I'm saying that you could take care of it with four people.
I'm glad you're an expert on that.
I am an expert.
Okay.
Okay, so, all we know is we're gonna need more money, so I guess with that, uh, I'll ask for public participation one more time, and then we go home. Any more public participation?
No, we have another meeting yet.
Oh, then we have another meeting? Oh, that's right, I saw that somewhere. All right, uh, did you make it to 7 o'clock? Oh, yeah.
7:08.
All right, so, uh, let's adjourn, hoping, or, uh, Finance at 7:08.